Um. Haven't started recording since. Yeah. Turned off speakers.
Yeah.
Normally you get a little red. Yeah. Yeah. Put that little carrot. Right. There right here. Yes. Yeah. Okay, okay, very good. All right, it's six thirty, call the order meeting number eighteen forty-six of the Eastman's are planning and zoning commission. We have a quorum, we have four regular members plus one alternate, so Frank, I will ask you to sit in on any comments or any voting you may need to take place.
Okay.
Added agenda items, we have an additional application to receive that I will read in under seat of applications. Legal notices, there were none. Public participation, this public participation portion of our meeting, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, how about online, is there anyone online that would like to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, take silence as a no. Proble of minutes, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. Yeah. Minutes of regular meeting eighteen forty-five. Does anybody have any edits, comments, or corrections?
Yes. In line thirty, it lists Gaudi without Frank is present. And in line thirty-six, it lists Gaudi is absent. So.
Last week, Frank, you were not here, correct?
That's correct.
So I think in line thirty, you have just strength, Gaudi.
Okay. Very good, any other suggestions, alterations? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting eighteen forty-five, which was held Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, with the revision striking Gaudi in line thirty.
There was a motion on the table, do we have a second?
I don't think I can vote.
Second.
Okay, second by Jim. Any other discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And staying, okay, so myself, Jim, and Ann voted affirmative, Frank and Dave both abstained, we think I'm not present. Okay. Moving on to receipt of applications, there are three applications. First one is PZ twenty twenty-three dash four, Twenty-Eight Abbey Road for site plan modification for installation of sport field lighting, the applicant is BSC. Next one is PZ twenty twenty-three dash six for one oh two Winkler Road in Newbury Road for a site plan modification for construction of a gravel storage yard. The applicant is BT Properties LLC. And the third one is PZ twenty twenty-three dash seven for one oh. One twenty-four Newbury Road is for recycling modification to replace asphalt sections with millings. And the applicant on that is Scott Coder. All these applications will be heard at a future meeting.
Okay, nice, just kind of correction.
Sure.
It should be asphalt cleaning to milling, that's the discrepancy that we're having.
Okay. Performance bonds, actions, permits, pensions, road acceptance. We have a request from Leicester Farms for a bond reduction. In our pocket, we received a letter from J R Russo's, addressed to Ruth Calabrese, requesting the reduction in bonding. I do see that the town engineer has not weighed in on this, so I would say that this will wait until the town engineer has had time to review it and have his comments on it. Okay. Your continued public hearing, we have PZ twenty twenty-three dash two for one eighteen Prospect Hill Road, special use permit for site plan review for proposed trucking terminal. The applicant has requested a thirty-day extension on this and for it to be tabled until our next meeting on March twenty-third. You need a formal. Okay, a motion, so can I have a motion to continue this public hearing until our meeting on March twenty-third?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on application PZ twenty twenty-three dash two for one eighteen Prospect Hill Road till our next meeting, which is March twenty-eighth, as requested by the applicant.
And there's a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, continue till our next meeting. Hearing. Uh, there are no new public hearings, nothing under old business, nothing under new business, under other business, we have a CEO report.
Well, we hear a lot to really talk about change much from from all of the last meetings, except that I've been working on this automobile business sweep of the town for all the dealers and repair shops. Um, sixteen of them actually were in complete compliance with their site plan, no cars parked on the right of way, no signs of signage. And I actually, I wrote down thank you letters for representing what we'd like to see in Eastman's or this type of business, etc. Um, and then there were twenty-eight that were not in compliance, uh, several of which, which made things a little easier to own by the same business or corporation, so it's kind of a little easier to consolidate. I would say at this point, more more than half of them, um, probably three quarters of them have contacted me, we've been working on new site plans together, um, for a small, I, for smaller ones that have gotten rid of parking on the lawn, wanted to add a couple spaces here or there, or do you want to do in-house, um, just agent site mod, anybody who's doing an overhaul, uh, probably Car City, probably um, the properties at one forty-one, forty-two need to get engineered plans, which they're aware of, they have content to me to show, there's additional spaces that the site plans we have don't show any kind of parking or display on them, and granted, a lot of these are, I mean, from the eighties, from the nineties site plans, but with the DMV, we don't require, we sign off, if, once they sign off, that land license transfers. And I think a problem that I'm trying to figure out how to work on is, so when we sign off on something, also let any new businesses that come in with a change of occupancy know this is what's been approved for your site, should you choose to add more display or, um, parking, you need to modify your site plan. So what we've done is flagged on our permitting system, um, all of the addresses they have for auto, auto dealers, auto repair shops. So should a permit come in for a change of occupancy, we know to contact them, um, see if it works that way, I think that's probably the most logical way to do it. Um, there are a few that have not contacted me at all, that they, as of the sixteenth, will be violation of their, of their, they are violating now. As of the sixteenth, we'll start actual citations, monetary citations, they received a friendly regulation letter, they received a violation, a notice of violation, I also personally went to every single one of these places in town and spoke to the manager on duty, if not the owner, and told them in person what was going on, um, so anybody I haven't heard from is gonna get a citation on Thursday, uh, and that's where we are.
Is a citation a fine?
Yeah, so it's.
And how much is it?
There's a whole process, a hundred and fifty dollars, they've got thirty days to come into compliance and pay the hundred and fifty dollars, at which point, if they do not, then they did a second notice of citation, notification, which gives them additional thirty days to appeal to have a hearings officer. Um, and that was scheduled, they've come before, state their case, if they don't do that, then it's an accumulation of a hundred and fifty dollars per day. And from that point on, uh, we kind of get the lawyers involved, lawyer involved, and, and it moves on from that point, but hoping we don't have to really get to that point.
How about that full-throated building, it's a new, but they have a hundred and fifty car in part, it's sliding.
And they have been, I've spoken to the manager, I've spoken to the owner, I'm in person, both of them, um. And yeah, and that was one of the most recent one, I signed off on a CEO, so that should not have been.
Yeah.
I don't think, I told them they would have to come back, I told them specifically, they would have to come back before the commission, because I don't, I don't see personally on a site, and that would be something for you to decide, where they could add more spaces there.
Yeah, they're not even close, I mean, I know occasionally get a guy a car or a, or a car, two or three in the grabs.
And I actually again today notified there, I've been in contact with the main owner of that property, and he's aware that have, he's aware that his tenant, anything his tenant does, it falls on him ultimately. He is very well aware, and I, I talked to him again today that I hadn't heard from the gentleman, and I've driven by it, and it still looks the same.
So.
So that's, that's the, that's a priority.
Let's start.
So hopefully, I mean, a lot of them are really doing well, so I would say that.
Right.
And other than that, nothing, excuse me, your, has come in. And just in our focus, my focus, fortunately, I've had enough time to do all this, but I'm playing, it's been good for the town, but there hasn't been any extra complaints, so.
The list is getting smaller.
It is, it is, but I'm talking about both of them, so that's very exciting to me.
So many of them are blue, because they're.
Uh, blue, it's white, white.
Yeah.
So blue, a lot of them are awaiting.
Orders.
Some kind of ordinance, um.
Any progress being made on that?
Uh, I know, I think we're back, or do I, you know, I'm sorry, was the blight ordinance is coming back before, before it's elected?
You got another revision.
Yeah. So we're, we're, we're.
We're working on it.
Plugging on it.
Any timeline?
When it's ready.
Thank you.
But other one, the one with blight ordinance is if there's something I can address, I have, um, for instance, our property on North Road. Um, I have just the car issue, I, I can't do anything about the blight without the ordinance, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Nice.
Good job. Okay, you have nothing under correspondence for a business meeting, you have the Yukon Clear Training, uh, Commissioner's briefing. You have anything on that?
No, I think that Ruth just wanted to make sure there was an opportunity, if anybody has any, any thoughts or questions, or something they wanted to mention or follow over.
It's pretty good.
Yeah, um, we had a cup, actually, we had a combination of three previous training sessions plus this, uh, past weekend's one, so now I've got a couple of notes combined to all of them, now, now open up the rest of the commission first, if anybody had anything that they had questions or comments on, anything that you heard that, uh, you want a clarification on, or, um, just want to bring it to anyone's attention.
I thought that clear training was very good, I thought the delivery in segments was easier to digest than a whole day. And, um, I watched the affordable housing one today again, and, um, I just think they're easier for me to digest when I'm only at the set for two hours as opposed to eight hours.
One of the things, I guess, I, I'd like just to make sure that I'm correct on this, so they talk a lot about the eight thirty G, which seems very compulsory on what you have to do for affordable housing, but if, did I see that correctly, that as long as we meet the ten percent requirement, eight thirty G doesn't apply to us?
Right.
We are in that situation.
We still have to do compliance.
That's eight dash thirty J.
Oh.
HS thirty G is the, basically the fast track for an affordable housing project.
And there were some things in there that if somebody came before us, uh, regular zoning requirements do not apply, it was almost kind of like, unless it's public safety or something, you cannot deny it.
Yeah.
So at least that's not something that we need to deal with in the, in the near future, all the way. Um. They made a comment that, um, which I kind of went through our regs, and I, I don't see us having this, but, uh, talked about that you cannot specify minimum housing sizes.
We remove that. Always the A to U's. We're good there.
Okay, good.
Um, and that's basically because by telling someone they have to build a house that's a thousand square feet, you're telling them they also have to have a budget that allows them to afford a house, you know, they only want five hundred, and they can read the code, they shouldn't have to build twice as much house as they desire and afford, but so we took, when we did the alternative living, I, I think, I can't remember what we called it, but basically where our tiny house regs and our accessory dwelling and regs live now, um, we took that minimum dwelling size, minimum first floor area, that's.
I do remember being there at one point.
You can cap, but you can't set a minimum.
Yeah, the cap has to do with the land size, and so that, so I guess if somebody has a hundred acres, they can build a hundred thousand square feet.
Well, you, yeah, I mean, but you can cap a dwelling size or, or a specific unit size just separately, but or. Or height, or coverage, or set, you can do it, all of those things, or you can just say minimum, you know, an, an apartment shall not exceed eight hundred square feet, and you can set that cap, you just can't set the bottom.
Gotcha. And the, the training session that we talked about on how to hold a public meeting, um, one of the things that was brought up there and said that if somebody requests to speak at a meeting, even though it's not a public hearing, you have to allow them to speak. Um.
Well, you do allow them to speak through public participation.
Okay, they, they made it sound like if we were discussing something and somebody had something that they felt was pertinent to the discussion, we had to allow them to speak.
You know, we call it a public.
It's not, if it's not a public hearing, even if somebody's in here for a site name modification or something like that, and we're discussing it, they, they made, that's how I interpreted it, they said if somebody had something they felt was pertinent and requested to, to put a comment in the record, we had to allow it.
Well, you, I mean, we've come in, run into this, or I've run into this several times, where people see something on the agenda, let's say it's a site plan modification, they send something in letter or whatever, and so it still is received, it still comes in and, and go in the file with the application, but it's not something that the commission uses to make a decision.
Right, but if somebody was in the audience and wanted to make a comment on it, that's what I'm asking about.
Yeah.
They made it seem like we had to allow them to, to speak.
I, I didn't pick up on that from them, do you know which attorney said it, or what part of the day?
It wasn't, it wasn't in this Saturday, it was in the previous one, we had a training class on, on procedurals of how to hold a meeting.
Hmm.
And then kind of along in that realm, they were also talking about that if somebody, if it is a public hearing and someone speaks, that we have to allow cross-examination of the person who speaks, if somebody has a question for, you know, we had the person, uh, under the, um, request for the events, you know, he kind of presented himself as a, as a expert witness.
Mm-hmm.
So they said if somebody had a reason to question or cross-examine the person, then we have to allow that, because he kind of presented himself as an expert.
So we would have to allow a member of the public to ask questions of an expert?
Right.
I think that the key to that is to be, is, is if they're an expert, I'm, I've never been in a situation where a third party steps up and says I'm an expert, you have experts that are representing the applicant.
They got their twelve pages of, uh.
Yeah, but I don't, um, I don't, I mean, I remember him speaking, but I don't, I don't remember him.
He presented his qualifications of.
Yeah.
We thought it'd be like a five-minute thing, it was an hour and a half.
But I don't, yeah, I just, I guess, I don't know if he would fall under the, under the.
Or is it just strictly if the applicant brings a traffic engineer or architect, where they're considered expert witnesses, and then they're, they can be cross-examined by them?
Yeah, I would say under those circumstances, yes, a, a third party showing up and saying, I'm interested in this application, and I'm an expert, and I feel differently than, that's, I think, a little bit different, because the commission's required to treat expert testimony differently than regular testimony. And you'd be in a position where you're basically having to accept comments from a third party unassociated, which is strange, um, I've never run into that. But I guess if it comes up, we'll.
And then I, I kind of dealt, there, there was a part where they talked about if we wanted to do a site visit, that it had to be noticed and everything, but I then delved into a little further, and it was after a public hearing is open. So prior to us, you know, when we get our notifications of what's gonna be, we can all go visit places and, you know, form our opinions of what's out there, but once the public hearing is open, if you decide that we need to go out and see the site, then it has to be noticed.
But we can drive by them and look at them, as in.
From the public, if you drive onto the property.
Yeah.
But prior to, if multiple people were to go together, it would be, you, the three of you got together and said, we're gonna go to this app. Now it's.
Yeah, so we, we, in the past, we, we used to go to the gravel pit, and we'd go in, right, right, we, we'd go in there too. So like, you know, me and Lorraine go, or me and Frank would go, and we'd take them.
But now I think they, they, they do say that specifically, because they were saying that you can't break it up as you go, you go, you go, you go, saying if once the public hearing is open, if you plan to make a visit in your official capacity, it has to be noticed.
Yeah, I've never gotten on anyone's property, but I've driven by them.
Yeah, we've had that a couple of times, and, yeah, there's ways to make sure that you don't, not, not to avoid wanting to make it a noticed meeting, but the problem is if you make it a noticed meeting, you have to allow the public to attend, and the applicant of private property may not be comfortable with members of the public tramping around in the gravel pit.
So for, for the record, I think the last, the last came for the, um, the old Greenstein place up there, he came as, guys, come up, take a look, if somebody, if they ask us, um, in a, in a meeting, say, hey, we give you permission to come up, can we come up?
I don't know, that, that, now that become a, a reason that we have to notice it?
If there's a quorum of people, yes.
I had a, because in this specific meeting, they, they said, doesn't need a quorum anymore, because people try to get around that factor by making sure that no two people showed up at the same time.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I don't know the specific way that it was presented, but I know that I have been given guidance from, uh, land use attorneys that, you know, for example, if staff wanted to do an individual, I'm gonna meet you at eleven, and you will come the next day, and one person at a time, take, for, for various reasons, that that would be okay, uh, maybe because of the public hearing, um, but still, I, you know.
And this was specifically when they were talking about all the parents.
Right, if you're gonna be using information obtained during the site visit for the. I guess, I don't know, to me, it would, it would be dependent on the information, if they were gonna use that information, and it was important into the decision-making process, in theory, if it's a public hearing, the public should have an opportunity to comment on whatever information. So the applicant is saying, hey, I'm in compliance, you should come and look at my site, and you go and look one, 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 and the the public is sort of left to sit there and say, okay, well, I guess they're in compliance, then, then I guess perhaps you'd want to do that, but it's tricky, because they are probably not gonna want to let any number of people on the property. We ran into this in another town, a commission member fell.
It seemed like they, they had to open it up to the public, they made it seem just like we had to let the public know that we will be going and do it.
But you have, it's, if we notice it's a public meeting, so you have to let them go, because it's, we couldn't bar them from it. And that was the issue that we ran into, we had a commission member fall during a sidewalk, get hurt, and, um, so we were sort of thinking about how do we do this, how, that we can't have members of the public that may have mobility issues, walk with steep site. So we, uh, basically.
I guess we have any, and then occasionally this comes up, we'll have to ask for irons on this.
Yeah.
Um, another note I made was that they talked about, once a public hearing is closed, there cannot be any changes or modifications in terms of conditions.
Once a public hearing is closed, there cannot be any changes to terms or conditions.
Look them up before.
I, I think we had that to say in, in the discussion period.
Yeah.
I think they said you couldn't do that, because now the public doesn't have the ability to comment on the changes that you're making after the hearing.
But if you decide to add a condition of approval that says someone should obtain a zoning permit before there's a commencement of construction, that's not, that's not part of the application.
Draft, that was on the record.
Yeah, but I mean, how do you differentiate, that's why they decided.
I guess one of the, I, you know, so conditions and modifications are different things, typically you see a modification on a site plan and a subdivision, and you see a condition on a special permit, because you can't approve a conditional site plan, it's either yes, it meets the regs, or it doesn't, you can approve it with modifications.
So that I wrote it exactly, is no additional terms or conditions can be added after a hearing has been closed.
And is this the bar training, or the, or clear?
This is the bar, no, not, not this one that was this past.
So clear.
Clear, yeah. They weren't lawyered for it.
Yeah.
Well, Ken Slater was there, I think Rich Roberts, I don't know, it's not for his side anymore, I can't remember who gave each one.
So let me, I'm gonna. That was all under that one, on how to conduct the meeting. So that can't add that, um. And. Notice. That was the third one we talked about, um. Um. Where I talked about the eight thirty G.
Yeah, with the public hearing, having to allow someone to speak, any member visiting a site.
They're talking about if somebody presents themselves as an expert.
Oh, yes.
I think they're an expert.
Claims.
Yeah. I can scroll through some of that. Um, then from this weekend's training, they, they say that, uh, subdivision approval is only good for five years, within, until construction doesn't start within five years?
Initial approval, yes.
Okay.
Just like a site plan.
Because I think, don't we have a couple that are, the those land that Bass used to own, or still does?
Also, five years is for public improvements. So it, so that's roads and water lines and all those things, if there are no public improvements.
Okay.
Then after five years, there's no expiration, because if everything is executed properly, then the lots are created and they're there, but you have five years to complete the public improvements.
Okay.
So there's a, yeah, it's a little bit tricky, because if there aren't any proposed, or they do the, the public improvements, then you can go on, and you could sell the first lot twenty-five years later.
Gotcha, so they have five years to complete the public improvement.
Or you're seeking an extension.
I, I think we gave extension, like two thousand, they have a recession, they, maybe you.
Yeah.
That's just up the wazoo there.
And there's a provision in the statute for that now, yeah.
When they spoke about navigable waters of Long Island Sound fall under additional restrictions, the Connecticut River considered navigable water?
I believe it does.
So any waterfront, probably North Water Street, South Water, will fall under additional restrictions.
I think so.
It's all the way up here, whereas it stopped somewhere.
Build it on sticks.
Uh, it's, I know that it's, I know that the Connecticut River is considered to be titled, at least through no, through, through parts of town here. Because there was some jurisdiction there, but that was passed, and almost no one really knew about it till after the fact, but yeah, there's some additional things that towns have to consider, but the Connecticut River falls into that. I don't know the specifics, wanted to speak to them, but I believe that.
So if we have anything that occurs in that area of town, that's waterfront, we're gonna have to look into, there's other restrictions on that. Scan. Um. I made a note here that talks about if there's something non-conformant for three years without enforcement, it becomes as a right.
Just building our structure.
That's how it is now.
Okay.
Eight, that's thirteen A.
So that, that doesn't have to be like, you know, misuse of property, blight, that kind of stuff. There's no way that after three years of having, you know, too many abandoned cars on the property, that it's allowed to stay there.
Eight thirteen.
It's just building the structure.
Yeah, building more structure.
Yeah, so like a setback violation, or a height violation, and it's not specific to uses.
Now, they also, when they talked about the, uh, meetings, I think they meant only if we were solely. uh, remote, like we were during COVID. They meant they made some kind of statement about that you have to provide means for people that if somebody doesn't have the means to attend an online, you have to provide it.
If they're requested. So if a member of the public requests access to a virtual meeting, a fully virtual meeting within, I think it's now twenty four hours. Um, during COVID, it was forty eight. I thought they reduced it and the town is obligated to provide accommodations, which could mean a laptop at town hall or library.
What about a phone?
You can't see this.
They have to be able to provide, be able to, yeah, to see and participate.
But since you now with the hybrid.
Right.
It doesn't apply.
Right, if we, we have to accommodate members of the public to provide them in-person accommodations for a virtual only meeting, and we have to provide an accommodation to a commission member if we have only in person and they want remote. But it's not a two-way street.
What about under ADA where if we had in one of the meetings, somebody say they couldn't hear?
They couldn't hear?
Do we have to provide interpreter for them?
No, I think, I don't know if we've got it on these things, if we've got.
Exactly.
Agendas are not, if somebody makes a request prior to the meeting for an accommodation of some kind, then we could certainly do what we can to provide it, but like, for example, Zoom has live captions, which aren't great, but I've had to do meetings that way. So peoples with people with hearing issues can see. Um. So if someone lets us know, I think we we have, you know, we certainly can try, but at the top of our agenda, it says this will be a remote and hybrid in-person meeting. If you have concerns about your ability to attend, please contact Town Hall app.
Okay.
So that's a running.
So they could call Town Hall and say, I need
Right.
During accommodation.
And if somebody says for, you know, not that that would be an issue here, like I, you're having the meeting in such and such a place and I can't get there. Accessibility, right? My wheelchair, I'm wheel. Then that gives us the opportunity to say, well, we need to accommodate this person. And if we can't, then postpone.
Yeah.
That's just like a C Y A. Professional term.
All right, that was all my notes. Anybody have anything else that they're going to ask?
No. Did we meet our training criteria per year and that?
I think so.
It's actually pretty interesting. It wasn't bad.
We'll send you, send you the tests.
I was gonna study good.
Uh, next item is temporary event regulations.
Oh. So this at this point is a discussion because we'd like to open this to start working on it. I had created over the past few months, a new application for our temporary events, which is I think at the back of your packet, I contacted every department that would be involved and asked them specifically what they would like to see on an application for questions. Um. So we're trying to streamline it a little bit better. If they can get an application, so if someone puts something in to me, say for a summer barbecue fundraiser or something or other. It's enough time for me to get all these things signed and filled out and get all the questions answered. If they come to me today for a summer barbecue Saturday, they have to go around and get individual applications assigned from each department. Um, and so we just tried to make it a little more comprehensive. What we had before really wasn't didn't ask a lot of questions and I had a lot of phone calls back and forth between departments trying to figure things out. Um, what we would like to do is start looking at our section of zoning regulations. They're very brief right now. Um, and there are a couple of things. I know Mike had sent me, it was at Newington. He sent me a couple of examples of what other towns are doing for their regulations for temporary events. One big thing is we only allow two a year, which we thought a little restrictive, even if you said four would make it quarterly, you can have one in a quarter. We were thinking maybe four to six um. But that would be something we would talk about and then take your input. Um, it says right now, event type is limited in our regulations. It says auctions, carnivals. But I mean, there are so many different types of events that we consider temporary that maybe we don't want to limit it to that. Um, there's a, there's a, something in there about getting a permit for tree sale of Christmas trees, which I don't know, it's something we stopped doing at some point. I did not see a single permit for any so I don't even know if that's a thing anymore, but just going through and kind of cleaning it up and making it a little bit more comprehensive and easier for everyone to understand. Um, if you have any comments on the application that I've got so far. I know, for instance, up top on the very beginning, I just wrote down again, you need to put the regulations. Alcohol beverages, that's not bad.
It's all the questions that we usually ask. You got police, you got it's not on the fire market. You got security, you got the bathroom. It's.
Well, the one that comes to mind is farmers markets.
Mm hmm.
If we actually wanted to have a legitimate, recent farmer's market that will be, they tend to run every week for the entire summer. So now you're talking, you know, fifteen, twenty
Yeah.
events.
And that might be something needed to separate category where we would grant something before the commission for a year long every other week or every two weeks. I actually had a phone call today from um Brian at North Central, uh, just North Central Health District, um, Health Department, and he said he was trying to get in order all the towns that he was in charge of that do do permanent farmer farmers markets in town because they're they're streamlining too, where they have one kind of criteria they fill out for, they don't have to do it every single time.
Yeah.
And I said, we don't actually have one right now, but we definitely send me the information. Put us, put us on your radar that if we do get something in town, we'd love to have, we can get this done for you as well. So it is something I think, I think it would be unofficial for town, but maybe it, maybe that's not necessarily.
Well, that's I'm worried this fall under this or not, or how does somebody differentiate that the farmer's market is not a temporary event there?
Well, I think maybe by defining how many times a year right there, we can have something. So if they come and say, well, we want to do a farmer's market, but it says here four to six times a year, we could then decide maybe to make that a special permit or or something that doesn't necessarily fit in these temporary parameters. We're thinking of, you know, the Halloween fair that the church does up on about Walmart or kind of smaller things like that. I know that the um the German
Well.
Um, they, was it the place on the depot?
Yeah.
They do different fundraisers throughout the year for their club. Um kind of more of small scale like that, but a farmer's market I think would be maybe something we could put a pretty stipulation.
Somebody wants to sell farm fresh eggs.
And we are.
Farm stand.
That's under farm stand. Yeah.
Not an offense really.
Like if Rebase decided to have like a farm market with like twenty five vendors there or something like that.
Well, we tried for a while at the Raleigh Museum.
Right.
Mm hmm. That's a name for it.
Oh, that one.
Not too many people showed up.
There weren't that many vendors.
Yeah.
I mean, I stopped there. There was maybe six, seven vendors that pre-COVID or.
Yeah.
Question, what um the town runs the event? Like the Veterans Road Race or those kind of things?
What are those?
How many of the third?
Very specific fees, and I wrote some of it up top.
Yeah.
If it has to do with the town, they need to go to Parks and Recreation. If it's on a town property, they go to Parks and Recreation. Um, I talked with Chief Hart about specifically road races, protests, um whether he gave me a list of certain things, anything that has a street parade. That's. And they take care of getting all their signatures from the proper, um, any alcohol that would just come before you regardless, that's already in our regulations. Uh, street related. Those are, those are the ones that when I sent them to the different department, they said, wait, wait, wait. And so we we were more specific for them. So I tried to give people as much information as they possibly needed before they even pick up the phone to call my department and say, oh, okay, I see. Oh, I'm going to call Parks and Rec because this is happening, you know, at the East Windsor Town Hall Park or something like that. So if you have suggestions to add, by all means, I would love.
And this frees, this frees you up. Here, you heard that. Who's got to do, don't call back and ask me twenty five many questions, right? Then they they come for us.
And it's.
Bar with.
It's safe for departments too, from having to say, hold on, hold on. Are they a year? Yeah, they've got everything and they, I sent this back and forth several times and they were feeling like, yeah, 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 oh, we forgot to add this or so all of this, this draft has gone through back and forth, back and forth, just to try to cover everything we possibly possibly think of.
So like the schools doing a bake sale or bingo night or those kind of things.
I think I have a town operating.
Yeah.
It's part and parcel of what they're doing.
Yeah, all the people events and things like that.
For me.
That doesn't really.
It's like, it's like Joe, the party has a beer twice a year and the children's beer together. And then he has vendors and he has.
Yeah, that would be more a lot more.
And all the, these ones were, Mike, keep in mind. Not lately.
What we ended up doing in the weekend, what I sent Danielle was we moved in the direction of looking at the qualities of the event to determine whether or not it needed staff approval or commission approval. So if it was larger than a specific size or more duration, or if it involved the sale of alcohol directly to the public, it went to the commission. And then if it met all the other criteria, it went to staff, um, because it was hard to draw a line through all, because you, you know, you have a farmer's market or a car show that happens every Friday night through the summer. That could be twelve instances. So we don't want the car show to have to come to the commission, but if somebody decides that they want to have a wine tasting, you know, at a, at some of some public place every Friday night, that might be different. So we looked at total size and and a lot, we kind of drew the parameters that way and didn't get involved.
Anything open to the public, you have no control over the how how big it's going to be, you know, how many people.
Well, yeah, so like one of the ones.
Sell tickets ahead of time.
Well, if we had an event area that exceeded fifty percent of the total area of the property or one acre, um, then it went to the commission.
Okay. So you're saying your footprint of it, not necessarily the occupancy or how many people.
Right, and you know, um, I think the other thing that we talked about.
To do a tag sales going to fall with us?
Is plan to host.
For separate.
Yeah, that's a whole other.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, performing public events. Well, exactly what becomes the difference between a tag sale or flea market.
So like, we wrote for public events, which involve the sale of alcohol, the principal use of the property is not a restaurant bar similar to stop shop, right? Because if a restaurant or a brewery is deciding to have a cookout for a fundraiser, they serve alcohol. They know how to do it. But we had like an auto body shop, want to have a wine tasting fundraiser. They don't do that. They don't have a liquor license. They, you know, it's a different ballgame.
Okay.
So we tried to, there's a, so there's a couple of different ways to get there once we figure out the totality of the event.
Writing, rewriting our regulations to be very specific to have this here and have what Michael's talking about, I think can help for a starting point for them. Then they figure that out, they have the application or they they know kind of where they want to go or not. It helps us guide them too. Because they have more specific rules instead of kind of, oh, I guess, I don't know, the tag sales or flea market. We have more, something more specific that can guide us, so. That's where, that's what we're working on next.
Awesome. Good. All right. No reason for an executive session, so anybody have anything else they want to add? And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I make a motion, we adjourn. We have a motion on table. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the meeting is adjourned, seven thirteen.
Yeah.
Bye, Peg.
I can't. Guys, have a good night.
Yeah.